This funding program was kind of a roller coaster. We started out on the House proposed budget as it being fully funded. On the Senate budget, it was partially funded, but we were in a pretty good position going into conference. When the first sort of conference passes happened, this project was actually dropped out of both subappropriation shares budget. So as the conference proceeded past the subchairs to the full chairs, this project was no longer a part of the budget even though it started in both budgets. But you know, that's sometimes how the process works. I will say that ultimately, the project was funded in the final pass before they took the budget to the printer. And I do want to thank the board members and also superintendent for your work in making calls to delegation members. Superintendent Bowden came up to Tallahassee a few times, met with Speaker Corcoran about this project himself, as well as the governor's office. And a lot of that came into play to making sure at the critical time when we needed to get funding put in for this project, that the funding was there. And really, the way that this project was funded was Speaker Corcoran took money out of his personal leadership fund and put it into the budget. But he only did that because this was something that he believed in and something that we had worked its way through the process. So we were successful there in obtaining $500,000, particularly just for this project. But it certainly teed up to seek more funding in the next budget cycle, and so we can continue that. But we did receive a lot of positive pushback. So on the next two items, or no, it's actually the VPK item. It's the second bullet, and then the last bullet. I sort of put those together because both of those issues were kind of policy issues that were driven particularly probably by some funding decisions that will need to be made. But we did spend time to try to sort of figure out how the legislature felt about each of those issues. The first one on increasing the FTE level for VPK programs. That's going to come out to about $2,400 a student. So just looking at the numbers for Sarasota, for example, that's about $860,000 if you take the number of VPK kids here in Title I schools by that increase. Now, that's something that there is some open-mindedness to supporting, but it's something that the reaction that we received was not something that the legislature's actually kind of interested in doing just as a statewide basis because of the dollars that you're talking about. But what we would like to put up in front of y'all and for you to consider, you know, as we move down the road, if this is something that continues to be a priority for the board, what we would suggest is maybe focusing on it either one of two ways. The first one would be similar to the Summer Learning Academy pilot where we seek to try to pilot this in Sarasota County. So we could bring that budget number down and sort of be able to focus on exactly what we would do with the money, what the deliverables would be, where we would be able to then show data as to this being a good spend and sort of do the same proposal we did with the Summer Learning Academies of seeking the pilot, but doing it in a way that then if we showed good data with what we were doing, that it could be used as a sort of a statewide example for future, for other districts to take on or the legislature to expand. The second thing that we've talked about possibly doing is I know that we have one Title I school that has a private benefactor on a pre-K program there. And there is, because of the way that that program is designed, it doesn't actually qualify for VPK money, but there is private money there, so that's what's funding the program. But we could also even as a part of the other Sarasota pilot, or as in addition to it, or separate from it, go to the legislature and say, "Well, you know, look, for this one school, we're not pulling down VPK dollars because we have a private benefactor, so see if we can get that money." Then reroute it back to the district for our VPK program in addition to the FTE funding that we currently get. So that's sort of what I wanted to lay out on those two issues. Or those are the two possibilities on the VPK issue. The second one on the funding formula for workforce development. That is one that the legislature is open to considering. That's actually not funded in the K-12 budget. It's funded in the higher education budget, but we've sat down with the staff members, Superintendent Bowden sat down with the Florida Department of Education on it, as well as the chairman in the area. And they see why the way that the formula works now, it doesn't really incentivize districts who have sort of are growing their programs because it does a three-year average rather than the prior year. But they do want to better understand the impact of giving districts the option or changing the way that it occurs. And up until this point, we really didn't have the data to show them about what the impact of their decision would be financially. So we're working on that. We're working on trying to get the data from other districts. I do think, like I said, that we have some openness on that, but that's going to be sort of a continuing project, and they do want to continue having that discussion with us. So we're going to keep working on that piece. The other, I sort of took these out of order, but the last local priority is the tuition waivers for students at Title I schools. We really tied this into the Summer Learning Academies and the parent university. And it was kind of an essential component of the pitch on the Summer Learning Academies was the whole two-generation approach. And everybody was very comfortable and supportive of the two-generation approach. So there was a lot of, in addition to getting favorable responses on wanting to fund our expansion of Summer Learning Academies, there was also a lot of interest in providing the tuition and fee waivers for parents as a part of the Summer Learning Academies. So where we stand on that is the legislature did grant to every school district a fee and tuition waiver ability of up to 8%. So we have that this year that we're going to be implementing. But along those lines, because at the same time that we get that under the next budget, we're also going to be expanding the Summer Learning Academy. So they asked us to document the implementation of this. And if we show a need above 8%, then they have shown a willingness to grant us that need in the future. So it's sort of like, okay, we'll implement under the waiver and tuition authority that you've got, that everybody's got, but from what you're describing to us, if you need more, come back and we'll certainly consider that. And we think that what you guys are doing with this two-generation approach is a wonderful program. So that's kind of where we stand on those, I'll call those district-specific policies. And then there's a couple of statewide district priorities that we had talked about that Vern's going to pick up at this point. Sorry.
I have a cousin named Drop Off. Legislature obviously with the events that occurred at Parkland totally changed the revenue picture of the state because we had had a process where the governor had recommended overall a 3% budget increase. The House and Senate were taking that into serious consideration. The legislature had been in session roughly about four weeks and we had this situation occur. And given policy decisions that they had already committed to, that did put a major hit on available dollars. Education K-12 overall did receive roughly a little over $500 million increase, but over $400 million of that is earmarked for specific categorical programs, particularly safe schools, you had that discussion earlier this morning. And we were really glad to see that. That does not necessarily help the base student allocation, which is the pot of money that actually runs the classroom. And Ron may want to chime in on this one, but we are still kind of hopeful. I know that, I believe the Superintendent's Association is pushing where the governor had vetoed about $64 million worth of local projects. That money is sitting in the Working Capital Trust Fund. There's a group called the Legislative Budget Commission, which is the House and the Senate where they have the authority to make budget amendments. We're hoping maybe that they might actually take a look at that at some point and help out to raise the BSA a little bit. That also is going to dovetail in relative to the safe schools thing which Ron will talk about a little later on. But in the meantime, the BSA did get an increase. It's $110 million. That does work out to 47 cents per FTE, as you have read. That $110 covers an increase in the base student allocation, I'm sorry, increase in the Florida retirement system of $54 million. And then the remainder is roughly to help fund the additional 27,000 to 29,000 students that are expected to be enrolled for this next year. So that does not really leave anything much for workload that you might have, salaries, or I could put the converse in saying that you've got money for workload and salaries, but don't have enough to cover the FRS. Either way, it's going to place, and Sarasota is not unique. It's going to place districts from the state revenue source somewhat tight. The legislature did agree to start going back and using part of the full tax roll increase in terms of that require local effort. That's the new construction only. That is not dealing with people's reassessments or reappraisals. It is new construction that goes on the tax roll that had not been taxed before. So I want to try to make that clear. And both the House and Senate did not consider that to be a tax increase for this coming year. We were pushing to try to get the retirement of instructional personnel back in. And one of the roles that I have, especially because these are statewide issues, we can't do it alone, so I work very closely with the state organizations, but also with other school districts in trying to get support, particularly counties that also have some influential legislators. And I will say that, I'm going to say the I-4 swath was of help to us because Orange County, Seminole, and other counties were really supportive of these. We ran into a mid-session question that could not be resolved relative to if you allow somebody to come back early, are they considered terminated? And that was an IRS question. So the legislation that had been filed by Senator Stube had sort of come to a stop at that point. We're hoping during the interim, we'll get that clarified because they were doing this prior to 2011. But now either IRS rules changed, or at least there was a concern by the House Rule Staff in particular that there was going to be a potential federal issue.
I don't understand that.
Well, it has to deal with, have you really retired?
You can take out your 401K, you can make a lump sum payment.
And have you really retired if you come back? That was the question that was raised. And we're going to try to-
So if you're under 59 and a half, you terminate your employment, you could take money out of your retirement without having to do a penalty because you terminated your employment. They don't want is somebody to do that, take out half a million dollars of their 401K, and then go back to work the next day.
Oh, all right. So it was taking it out of the retirement fund. Okay.
But I will say there is still strong support for this particular issue, so that may be something you want to consider continuing to pursue for next year. Streamlining assessment-
Before you leave that, something that certainly we didn't contemplate at the time, but if you look at statewide, the issue with law enforcement officers, specific to, I can hire a retiree out of the city of Sarasota because they have a private pension. I can hire them the next day. Someone leaves the sheriff's department, they have to sit out a year. So as we look at going forward, as we're all trying to staff, not just school districts, but every department in the state is now adding officers, any flexibility that could be contemplated there would be extremely helpful to us.
And that was part of the intent. That's in 2026 for retired law enforcement to encourage them to be able to come back in. But like you say, that's, I think all that's going to be a work in progress. We were pursuing the board's priority with, again, other districts dealing with SAT, ACT scores and also being able to use that in lieu of FSA. Again, this was proceeding along very smoothly. We had Senate support. We had support from House leadership. Parkland occurred and priorities shifted. What did pass is, I won't say it's convoluted, but it's got a little flaw in it. The intent was that for students who take A, B, IB, or ACE exams that are comparable to the end-of-course exams, that those scores would count in lieu of having to take the end-of-course exam. There's a logistics issue in that because some of the AP or IB don't come back in time by the end of the year. So that's something that we'll work with the department on to see if we can figure out. But that may require legislative glitch fix for this next year. There is a lot of interest, however, still dealing with FSA. I know that there's, the state board is going to be looking at cut scores next month, presuming that we come back in June or at some point to talk about priorities for next year. I think we'll have a little clearer picture as to exactly what you would like to see happen, and also the potential impact of the cut score changes that they're talking about. The modification for some students to, who are enrolled in ESE programs to be exempt, this was one that Ron had checked out, but we heard this uniformly, the Department of Education did not want to deal with that period. They wanted to keep it as individual request, individual waiver consideration, did not want to provide that degree of flexibility that we were after. That's not to say it wouldn't happen next year. That was what was given to us this year.
And on that note, that doesn't mean that they're not open to maybe considering a more streamlined process because we have, you know, sort of a greater need for looking at waivers, I think, than a lot of districts do. But they are, you know, they are certain in the policy that they should look at all accommodations first and individually evaluate every single student before a waiver is granted. So there's not going to be, they're not interested in having the discussion about any sort of a blanket-type waiver for a certain, I'd say that would establish model of a student, so.
Lastly, we did make progress this year on pre-kindergarten, specifically of having better certification procedures and standards for pre-K teachers across the board, public and private. There's also a review going to be occurring dealing with the school readiness exam. That was one thing that a number of counties were really concerned about where a student or child takes the exam, comes into kindergarten, really is not ready. And we consider that to be a significant push because for the last three or four years, that has been up before the legislature. This is the first bill finally that has passed that actually addresses it. It's not the end, but it is a significant start. And we'll hopefully see what comes out with that readiness test standard and then see where we want to go for next year.
Yeah, and the big key to the new, at least how the legislation calls for the new assessment, is it will be observation-based. Now, we don't quite know how that's going to be implemented, but that is intended to really make sure the student's ready. So.
That is great because my daughter teaches, pre-K teachers, VPK teachers, all over the state.
Yeah, it's pretty remarkable how, and that bill on the early learning kind of shows the tenor that was going on in the legislature. This proposal's been around, I mean, variations of it, for four years. Marlene O'Toole, who was the chairman of the House Education Committee, very strong legislator, pushing for this and could not get it up the hill because of the pushback that this proposal or similar proposals received. But with everything else going on this year that sort of came up with, you know, obviously the school safety, but other issues going through the legislature, this bill just sort of made it through. I mean, people were aware of it, people were watching it, but it remarkably pushed through without any controversy. So, and it's not because there were many changes to it from previous proposals.
That's great.
You want to talk about that or what?
Okay.
Other bills?
Yeah, just-
Other bills, we've got a successful legislation. I think most of you are familiar with these, but I will say the House Bill 1013 about changing daylight savings time. Don't look for Congress to act next week. Sending things to Congress, and this requires both the House and the Senate agreeing to give an exemption to Florida. I know that Senator Rubio has come out in favor of it, but you've still got 98, 99 other senators to deal with. We have no clue if they will take it up or when they will take it up. Chances are it would be a rider as an amendment onto some bill at some point. And even though legislature passed it, there are still folk who actually would like to see it go the other way, back to just let's have Eastern Standard Time, or stay status quo as the way things are. But the legislative expression right now is to put daylight savings on a year-round basis. 1279 was an effort by the legislature to provide greater transparency on school budgets and school auditing. The bill, as you know, has a delayed implementation date. And the reason for that is toward the end of session, they began to start really looking at what was already in statute. For example, Chapter 10, 10.215 is the Educational Finance Accountability Act. And some of the provisions of this didn't quite mesh with or even replace what was already in statute. There was also a concern about the cost of implementing some of the requirements that were set in of having additional charts, having additional reports done that was related to budget. And in everybody's best interest, they decided to delay it a year, look at it during this coming year, and see how they want to try to change it, perhaps to where, number one, it doesn't conflict with what's already in law, and secondly, something that was just doable if you want to increase that. So that's, it will be back, but at least for this coming year, it's on hold for the time being.
Yeah, and on that note, I mean, there was, the reason that they went ahead and enacted it and didn't just put the bill on a shelf, is there is a lot of interest in increased fiscal transparency in all governments, including school districts. So there was some work that was done on this bill, enough work where they wanted to see it enacted. But towards the end of session, where you get to that time where you really start to refine the bill and get it into a position where everybody's comfortable enacting it as-is, there was just not enough oxygen in the room with the school safety bill and 7055, the other bills, to really do that. So people didn't want to just make it a fallen soldier and just push it off till next year, go ahead and enact it, but then delay the implementation until after next legislative session with the intent of the same sponsors bringing it back in a glitch bill-type situation and narrowing some of the provisions.
I have a quick question on that. I know that there was a threshold as to who would qualify from the size of that. How'd they define that? Was it revenue or assets?
If your total operating budget, total operating budget-
Total operating.
Was 500 million or higher.
Okay, and that was the final, okay.
But that was just for the inspector general provision. So that was, it would require every school district with a total budget of 500 million or more to have an inspector general position at the district.
Internal.
Internal auditor.
Internal auditor.
Right. Some counties already do.
Correct. And I know there's a lot to discuss about that threshold.
Right.
So it was 500, and it was total operating.
Right.
Okay.
Correct.
Jennifer Sullivan, Turco.
Yes, in the House.
Or counting to Zach on the block.
No, no. Yeah, there's certain districts that I think that was directed towards.
Senate Bill 1392 does require that we must have some kind of a juvenile pre-arrest program. This was a compromise between mandating civil citation of a couple of years ago, just saying you must have a pre-arrest program. Some counties have civil citations, others have a variation of that. It does set forth a stipulations and when that program would be used depending upon what kind of offenses there. And I'll be honest, I didn't get a chance to check with staff to see where we are with that, but I think most counties do have intervention program that occurs prior to that point. The tax package is the three-days tax holiday. There was a clarification, you can now use capital funds for assistive devices, for example, such as whiteboards, which, this is local capital dollars, which up to this point, the state had said could not happen.
What does school start? Seventeen to August. Okay, good, good. I bet people complain that the holiday came after school started.
No. And the-
The holiday can be pulled.
Provision that does not impact us at the moment is if you go for an infrastructure sales tax referendum, there needs to be a 60-day performance audit that'll be conducted by the legislative arm called OPAGA. And also increases the cap $250 per FTE for property casualty insurance that you can use for that. Judging from this morning, and Ron had suggested that we not do what I would call a reading of the will, that's how Spill's 7055. But I really believe that for the most part, everybody is familiar with the major portions of it, certainly some key pieces. But what I'd like to do is maybe just highlight a couple that I did not hear discussed because these were things that we certainly had an interest in. One of which was being able to reinstate flexibility for Title I, which the legislature had in their wisdom last year regulated. It does allow districts to meet the intent of federal law, Title I, Section 3 of the ESEA Act, and also increases the indirect cost that can be charged from 8% to 10%. That does provide this year as a policy, and I'm going to suggest that we look at this as being one year only because legislature appropriates funds on an annual basis. But they adopted a policy that was actually put out about three years ago, didn't go anywhere, and that is for the state to cover the cost of capital, cost for charter schools. And they appropriate 145 million to do that, and for 1819, school districts do not have to contribute toward that. In the bill, there is a formula that says if that percentage or if that is not adjusted by CPI in future years, school districts will kick in proportionally enough money. We've been around long enough to know that we take these a year at a time, and I'm quite sure that this issue will probably be revisited again next session. We will have a new legislature and a new governor. So at least as far as we know for this coming year, that's the policy that has been set for that. In the slide, and I apologize, we talk about possibly $5 million more pending FEMA. That particular provision was vetoed by the governor, so it is 145. School districts, by the way, will continue to receive the $50 million that we've had that's split among the 67 counties for maintenance, repair, renovation work. Next page over, we were able to get flexibility on SREF, the state regulations for educational facilities. Again, this is voluntary. You can follow SREF to the T or in places where it does not affect essentially shelter capacity. If you're doing remodeling, renovation, or building a new facility, you are able to waive the non-life safety portions of SREF. There are a lot of things in there that people feel just cost extra, may not do as much. Prime example I'll use is requiring certain walls to be tiled rather than using wallboard, situations like that. The legislature also clarified the restoration of funds without needing a facility survey. This covers our capital operating budget, voted referendum, impact fees, gifts, and so forth. The department last November had issued a memorandum saying all of those had to be part of the five-year plan. This basically undoes that DOE memo. Best and brightest recipients, the best and brightest scholarship remains as it is, but if a teacher receives the scholarship at the end of this year, is reassigned within the district to a different position, that teacher would receive the bonus during the following year. The way the law had been written right now is that if you left a teaching position, you didn't get the bonus. So this is more of an equitable issue that they're trying to do. And last on that is the district now has to display the state model, "In God We Trust", conspicuously. We did not get the regulation of how large the letters are to be, what size the plaque, but it says that every building that we have, there will be that model displayed in all school facilities.
That's coming after we put the signs up, then that's how you make the paper.
Or however you want to do it. However you want to do it. And that's probably butchering 7055, but I really believe that you're dealing already with the major pieces of this legislation. We're glad to answer any questions that you might have on that as we finish out.
Yeah, I'll just point out, because I think it's important for everybody to understand at least the motivations behind, you know, this large proposal. Because if you look at it in light of 7069 from the year before, it kind of looks like the exact same thing happened two years in a row. But they were actually much different in the way that they came to be. Everybody knows 7069, and everybody has their own feelings about whether, you know, that was positive or negative. But that was 2017. 2018, 7055 was actually proposed with the desire to have it relieve some tension between school districts and the legislature. That was the intent behind some of the base and the starting point, as explained to me from people who drafted it and their motivations. You know, make no mistake, there are two new vouchers in it. But I can tell you that because of the makeup of the legislature with two senators on not being in office at the time of the legislature, they could have run voucher bills as standalone bills and they would have passed the legislature. The votes were where the votes were because there were 38 senators, and two senators who weren't there were anti-voucher folks, and so that's just politics. But if you look at 7055 outside of those pieces, you will see, and Vern went over them, and I just wanted to point them out, there are some positive take-home issues, more so than were found in years past, on things that districts have been saying for years that they have wanted to achieve, the SREF stuff, receiving some of the Title I funds back. The local funding issue that the DOE had come out in their memo and overturned, that was a significant issue to a number of districts. You know, I know that it had some potential impact here, but you had some districts who had sort of triumph money coming for a new high school, and that wouldn't have allowed the new high school. So there were some large issues in there. I'm not trying to pigeonhole the legislation one way or the other, but I just wanted you all to have out here at least some of the motivations behind it that put it in somewhat of a different light from the legislation that we saw in 2017. of a different light from the legislation that we saw in 2017.
Can you do 20s?
Well, moving into school safety, I appreciate, and I'm glad that I was able to get here a little bit earlier so I could pick up on the conversation about how you all are implementing some of the school safety legislation, particularly on the resource officer. You know, here is, we have two slides here that sort of go through the pieces of it. You all seem to be experts in the way that I listened to you all workshop on it before. I just, you know, I would just point out that this is the quickest I've seen the legislature put together, a substantial piece of legislation that had six or seven moving parts to it, and do it in a way that it doesn't actually have a fatal flaw that anybody has found at this point to it. It's got a lot of things that need to be clarified, and things that need to be tweaked, and things that need to be understood from everybody who's implementing it. But as you know, it dealt with mental health, threat detection, security, gun control, all of those pieces. But it seems that, you know, from the discussion this morning, that you all are very well aware of those pieces. I did, after the meeting this morning, speak with, I forget the gentleman's name who was sitting on the right in the red shirts. Okay. Yeah, and there are, we have spent the last two to three weeks literally in the governor's office and in the legislative staff meetings with members on the phone, going through various interpretations of all of these pieces, particularly around the resource officer, safety officer. What was the, what does the law say? What was the intent of it? What is the expectation that was created? You know, are we dealing with bell-to-bell? Are we dealing with all activities? How do you deal with summer? The same things that you all are grappling with. And so a lot of those things are trying to get everybody on the same page in how districts should proceed with them in a way that there's nobody really looking and saying, "That's not what we meant." We're getting there. I think we're a lot farther along than we were a week or two ago, but I did offer my card to him, because he seemed to be one of the people that are sort of implementing this issue, and we'll be having some discussions about some of the things that at least, the way that the legislature's interpreting them. But the biggest takeaway that I had, you know, from at least on the resource officer piece was it was Judge, it was Sheriff Grady from Polk, who was, you know, the Sentinel Program was the model for the Guardian Program. And in his discussion when he was testifying, he just said, you know, everybody kind of needs to understand that if you remember 20 years ago, the thought of having an armed officer at a school was, everybody went crazy, you know, who's sending a law enforcement officer to a school, the thought of having somebody there? And now in 20 years, we've totally reversed that to everybody saying, "Why isn't there one here?" And so I think that that helps put a lot of context into that discussion. So we won't go through the points, but I think that sort of gives the overall, you know, response on that.
The one thing I'd like to add to that, and this was, the word serendipity comes to mind, and it's not necessarily that, but it's a positive irony. The legislation on mental health was actually filed pre-session, prior to anything occurring. Kathleen Pasadomo is a senator, she's been very concerned about mental health at the adult level. And after years of trying to get something moving following Columbine, following Sandy Hook, her proposal surfaced. And the key piece to it especially is to where it provides the funding, but it also strongly encourages the community inter-agency efforts. And I think the plan that I was hearing here this morning absolutely hits that on the head. And as far as I'm seeing around this state, kudos to this district, you are well ahead of a lot of other places who are still trying to figure out what's in the bill. And that is the intent, I believe, that Senator Pasadomo had. It was very fortunate that the, fortunate that bill was there. We have heard a lot of horror stories, and even the situation that occurred in Parkland, where if somebody happens to be Baker acted, they go in and they come out, and there's nothing. And the school doesn't know what happened because the records are confidential. There's no follow-up, there's no further support. And that's just one example, but hopefully things like that can be fixed, because that obviously is one of the things that led to what did occur in Parkland.
There was a note that I just found that I had made this morning when you all were having the discussion, and I think Todd, you brought up the potential either special session or budget commission about moving unsment funds from the so-called Guardian Program into the resource officer, into the resource officer categorical, because they were separately appropriated. There is definitely consensus to do that. The numbers that the legislature had as the best they could, I would say a month ago, was the sheriffs did not believe based on at least initial district feedback and what they could actually accomplish within one year of out of that 67 million, really even being able to spend more than 21 million of that this first year. So, but that was a number a month ago. That's why the governor's office sent out a letter to every district, "Are you going to do this program? You know, where are we?" That is really to try to nail down exactly what needs to be kept into that categorical, and then the rest of it. The consensus is we will transfer it over into the safe schools allocation so that it can be spent on resource officers. Now, more important to you is that that categorical right now just says, school resource officers, which under the law are treated differently than school safety officer, which is a district-employed officer. But there is absolutely a consensus that when the legislature uses those terms, even though we won't be rewriting laws, we're just going to be moving money around, that that money can be spent on sworn officers at the school, whether you call them, whether they're employed by the district or employed by another law enforcement officer in the area. So that's one that in the last two weeks, everybody has gotten on the same page of and says it doesn't matter if it's a district-employed officer or if it's a sheriff, the money is there for that person, so.
I have a question. You know, Grady Judd in Polk County, the school that has the Guardian Program is a college, it's not K-12.
Correct.
And it's a very small college, I'd just like to bring that up. But what is your take on seeing other districts in the state with starting a policing entity as we're looking at doing? I know Palm Beach County, Vern, you're in Palm Beach County. What is your take? Are other districts looking at doing the similar kind of thing to what we're doing?
Yes. I think there, I'm going to say all options are on the table. There will be some small counties, predominantly rural. I know everybody knows where Mayo is, in Lafayette County. But Lafayette County's Sheriff's Department has a total of four deputies for the entire county, they've got three schools. They probably will be looking at some kind of a modified Guardian Program, for example. You'll find a few others doing that. But I would say that you've got, six counties right now have a school police department, and they've been in existence for some time. Those that don't, I'm hearing the discussion, particularly in terms of looking at cost. That's the predominant factor, as well as the degree of support that they can receive locally, number of municipalities, all sorts of things. And you've gone through that force field analysis, I believe, this morning. But I think you will see probably some other counties get into a serious discussion. How quickly they do it, that I can't answer. And I heard what you're talking about here, some may want to go immediately, others may want to wait a while, but I think you'll see a growing number at this point, partly with the fact of where districts want to be, maybe, I want to say a little more in control of things. But your resource officer, and this is, I'm speaking, I no longer or do not work with Palm Beach County, but one of the benefits that they had was these officers were trained also in behavior modification. And much of the work they did was prevention, matter of fact, most of the work they did is prevention. It's not where the principal calls up and says, "Get this kid out of my school." They do a lot of overnight intelligence, they know what's happened the night before, they come in, they work with them. And it's a different type of officer than, for example, a highway patrol officer that you might have. And that's one of the benefits. But I think that from what I saw this morning, I think you're doing a very good move to look at it and weigh the pros and cons in terms of what's going to be certainly best for the community here.
Shirley.
Were you hearing from districts where there's, you know, their partners were, the 50% match, I mean, were a lot more pulling away from that, or have you heard anything?
I have, I've had a mixed review. There are counties that I know of where they have a very good relationship, they don't want to change it. In their view, they like to see the sheriff continue running the program. I know of a couple of counties at this point that, for financial reasons, they're beginning to look at perhaps taking it over.
And I think what's helpful is to sort of take a step back and look at exactly what the legislature did. And the legislature basically took the reports of what was, what districts were doing as far as resource officers go from 1516, ran the costs of how many schools, or ran the numbers of how many schools that covered, the costs that were out there that included a lot of 50/50 shares, and then came up with a pot of money that would double that number of officers. They did not come up with a pot of money that would put an officer in every single school, or one to 1,000, they did it that would double that officer. Now, they also say that the assumption was that the local, inter-local agreements, memorandums of understanding, shares would still exist and those would go unchanged. And what everybody has sort of taken a step back and realized is what they didn't account for is when they then double the number of officers, there is a soft cost that the law enforcement entities are picking up in addition to the officers that nobody really brought up in the three weeks that we were trying to put this thing together. That's the cost of vehicles, the cost of bullets for training, all of those sort of things are not there. And I think that that's where you're seeing in many districts, a lot of this interaction or a lot of, you know, things that were established kind of being pulled back because there's other costs that weren't accounted for. But I don't know, was Leon County in your six as having a police force?
No.
So that's an example. So Leon County, for example, has their own police force. It's a police force of one.
Okay.
Yes.
That surprised me.
Right. And so, and so there are, there are districts who...
Is there a definition for force?
Because the way the law works is that when a district hires a sworn officer, they automatically default into becoming a law enforcement agency. It's sort of a cross-reference of chapters. So as soon as you hire that sworn officer for that job, you become a law enforcement agency, and then you have some more abilities under the law enforcement statutes. So there are districts out there that officially are police forces, but by no means is that their solution, but they're using that as sort of hybrids of how, okay, well, how are we going to now interact in this new world, starting the school year in 2018, and what do we build on what we already have? And that's, and those are the discussions that are happening that you guys, at least from the proposals we saw this morning, are very well down the road, so.
Interesting.
Next page that we have is failed bills. I'm just going to let you read that. We put that in to let you know that there were some things that did not make it through statutory legislation at this point. Budget, I think, Ron, we've pretty well covered to a large extent. The one significant change is schools that might be in the low 300, that, you know, they do not require the Level 4 student anymore to be part of that, and they give flexibility back to the district in terms of how they organize and do that. I am anticipating that in one of the bills, 495, the original part of that bill was actually to go back and review the district cost differential again, and that actually fell out of the bill. But it is an appropriations act. There will be a study again of the district cost differential to determine whether the formula that they're currently using is fair and equitable. You know that we've got 13 counties, I think, at this point that are above one, and the remainder are below, and it is a multiplier. But tied in with that, and one of the things that did occur this year was they added in, or was done one year back in history, a section where it talks about being able to provide a compression dollar amount for those counties that were below state average in their total potential dollars per student in the preceding year, to try to bring them up. It's an effort of equalization, but as a backend effort, if you will. And as one who has followed the FEFP, and certainly with Dr. Bowden with his degree and background, we've seen what had been, I'm going to say, a somewhat complex formula really gerrymandered through the years. And this last action that was taken is tied to $56 million, which benefited 32 counties. That 56, if you spread that into the base student allocation, would have helped a great deal. So I'm anticipating that the DCD review may turn into more of a look at the entire FEFP for this coming session. It depends upon, again, how the leadership is set up and the governorship and all that. But there are an increasing number of people who really are getting frustrated that to please a few counties, they'll do this, or they do that, and the formula, the integrity of the formula somewhat just gets misstrued.
Something's causing me to get a headache. You said at the beginning that the budget went up $110 million?
Right.
And you said that...
In the base allocation.
You said it's 47 cents per person. That would imply that there's over 200 million students?
There's...
Because if there was, if it was 110 million students, it'd go up a dollar. If there was 50 million students, it'd go up $2. So how do you go from 47 cents, if it's 110 million, how does it get 47 cents per student?
There's a...
I'm sorry, my head can't, I can't concentrate with that.
In the, I don't have it, hang on a second, I do have it. In the summary page here, this is the conference report that comes out, the actual summary page that we're using here, talks about the base student allocation, and it's raising the dollar amount from $4,203 to $4,204. But the calculation is the weighted FTE statewide, that's all students identified by program. This isn't bodies, this is number of students by the kind of program that they're in, times the base student allocation.
So you're implying that there's over 220 million?
Well, the enrollment at this point in weighted FTE is 3,720,000.
Am I math right?
Weighted FTE is substantially different than FTE. You take FTE, which is a head count.
So the weighted FTE is over 220 million?
No.
No.
No. Keep going.
All right. What they wind up doing is that they identify the number of unweighted FTE. That's a student, that's just a student of taking six periods a day. They then identify that student based on the kind of program that they're in. For example, if you're a K3 student, there's a cost factor that gives a value of 1.107 times that base allocation. But let me just give you the bottom-line figures here. The calculation for the base allocation is the weighted FTE, including the district cost differential, and the amount is 12,900,000. I'm sorry, excuse me, 12,900 million. The amount for this coming year, this in the conference report, is 13.036 billion, or an increase of $110 million.
Did you say...
And that translates back to roughly 47 cents per FTE.
Do you understand what I'm saying, Dr. Bowden?
Okay, but base funding isn't directly related to base student allocation. You have to take FTE, multiply it by a program cost factor, which is where you get your weighted FTE. Weighted FTE is not a head count. FTE, that's living, breathing bodies. Weighted FTE is adjusted based on programs. Statewide, it increases the quote "number of FTE" somewhere between 1.3 and 1.5. And so you take your weighted FTE and you multiply it by the base student allocation and the district cost differential. The district cost differential can be a huge variable for district...
How big could the cost differential be?
Well, ultimately, $110 million. At our particular district, although we went up 47 cents in base student allocation, we went down about $22 by way of the district cost differential, so that our base funding was substantially decreased, although total funding was up because categoricals were up, and the base student was up because of statewide appropriation. But dollars that flowed specifically, we did not benefit from compression, which is very important. Our district cost differential went down, and so those factors compound our personal finances. But at the state level, that's what he's talking about. It's a rather straightforward formula that when implemented in the 80s was seen as kind of a pure solution to both an equality and an equity problem. But the problem is 30 legislatures have had a shot at it and tried to figure out the best way to make that formula work for the home team.
If I can, really quickly, just because we have an actual hard stop at 2:30, and that's as late as we possibly could go, because we said 2:15. So I just wanted to make sure that any other things that wanted to be addressed or summarized with that notice.
Okay.
You don't have to stop, you still have...
Good job, Vern. All right, all right.
Nicely done.
Yeah.
We are open, certainly in terms of how you want to go about dealing with next year. We do have a period of time. I know that there are state organizations, be it the superintendents, the coalition, the school boards association, others, the Greater Florida Consortium, that have deadlines or try to have deadlines to sort of meet issues. And one of the things I think that we've heard clear is to try to have a program set early enough so that we're not doing it at the last minute. But at the same time, being an election year... But at the same time, being an election year, and as much as we've got constitutional amendments, and hopefully you have, but they did, we sent that out late last night. But a couple of those have major impact potentially on policy decisions. And depending upon what happens with those, depending upon, obviously, the governorship election, you may want to consider looking at coming up with some recommendations, local, state, that worked out really pretty well, district priorities and state priorities, and have that as a working guide. And then after the election, and after then we see what happens with the CRC amendments, come back as we did, like in December, and refine it. And if we need to take stuff out, we take it out, and need to put stuff in or modify it, we can do it at that point, prior to your meeting with the delegation, and the whole process really getting started.
And some of the most important pieces are, if we are going to go after individual funding items, again, which I strongly recommend that we do, the sooner we know exactly what the board is interested in, the better, because there is a ramp-up time of securing, you know, local sponsors, speaking with the new chairman that will be appointed, and also looking at what the board is interested in, and keeping it in context of what's doable, you know, as far as the funding availability out there. So if there's going to be more than one project, then, you know, let's have a discussion about that and kind of narrow that down as soon as possible.
Okay. Gene, I need you.
Well, I talked about, with the superintendent yesterday, in fact, about having us start looking at this next month, because we have this as a working document. So we've got the issues that we had this year, perhaps some of those we should bring back. We don't have to make our decision on everything right now, but we need to have some type of a working skeleton, if you will, of things that we'll look at next year. Because if we are going to have any impact at all, we need to be meeting with some of these people in the legislature and having discussions with them that are meaningful to our district, I think, sooner rather than later. Although the legislature will meet later next year with the election in November and the CRC issues and so forth. I think it would make good sense to know what our district priorities are, and we can always add to it, so that we can go forward with some tangible things, not, "Hi, how are you? Here's some banana bread," or whatever certain people take into legislators. I don't do banana bread, but, you know, things like that. I think it would be very helpful and instructive for us and for you to have ourselves in, at least in some format of structure before, because we get into the summer, the last meeting we have in June, then we don't have another workshop for two months. So.
Agreed. Can we touch on the, there's a, well, to say, there's a few CRC proposals, but they kind of rolled some things together.
Three minutes.
Can you be real quick?
The one at this point that has a direct impact on K-12 is Proposal 6003. That, I'm guessing, is going to wind up being Amendment 8. We've already got five amendments set, and they're going to just take the numbers from that point. The proposal includes three things. One is the term limits for school board members that takes effect at the 2018 election, same as the legislature did in 1992. So it doesn't count against anybody who has been a board member, but that eight-year clock starts ticking as of 2018. The second is putting civic literacy into the Constitution. The rationale for that was, the people who are very much in favor of that are afraid the legislature might take it out for some reason.
That's current law, right?
That's current law.
And it's in the state standards?
Yes. The third issue is the allowing the legislature to establish schools or programs other than those that are controlled, operated, and run by school districts. The way the language is written is that, obviously, the focus has been allowing the state to set up a separate state authorizer for charter schools. Number of states already have that, but that's been the focus on it. If you read the proposal very carefully, it really goes beyond just charter schools, because it leaves it open to where it talks about schools or programs, it doesn't say just charter. And that would be something for the legislature to consider. So that's a significant policy issue that could have major implications for 2019, and hopefully, people take a close look at that.
Those schools would still get, Carolyn?
Vern?
This is the same question I was, do those schools still, real quick, do those schools still get our public revenue, though, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
So they'd get local tax dollars, but we wouldn't oversee them?
Well, the state, they've got multiple ways to do it. They could set it up as a separate system that's run by the state, separate from school districts. But the bottom line is, is that the pot of money, that's K-12 education, the big picture, the money would come out of that.
Yeah, the important piece of that is that it allows for non-district schools to be established by the legislature and fund them as they see appropriate. I mean, that's what it triggers, because even today, when you have a charter school, it is established by a district.
Carolyn?
One of the things, I thought that when you put an issue on a ballot, it can only contain one issue.
That is, for anyone in the public and for the legislature, it does not include the Constitutional Revision Commission. They constitutionally can set it up any way they want to. 77, 90, they, 77, 78, they were all over the board. 97, 98, they banned them, they've got the authority to, the phrase is log roll, but they've got the authority to combine them.
We don't have any delegation that we can even go to right now, because they're all in the head office. They're all resigned or something. So who besides our delegation should we go talk to?
10 seconds.
Concerning...
If anything, you said, you said we should go talk to the legislative now.
You've got, part of our role, obviously, is we reach out when we need to, beyond just the district. Part of my role is also lobbying other counties to adopt our proposal, so we can get some broad-based support at grassroots level. The other is that we do have, at this point, 19, is it 19 Senate seats that are not up for reelection? Either 18 or 19 at this point that are not up for reelection, they're there.
But you've got, like, Joe Greeters, for example. I mean, he will be running for Senate.
Right.
And with that, I'm going to have to adjourn now, because we need to, and I'm sorry. Thank you very, very much, I appreciate you guys coming in and for all the work, appreciate it. We are adjourned.
He's going to be here, see you.[1758.33]